We are so glad that you are here. I'm going to start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they share this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you, and want to say that we are very honored tonight to have the mayor here to give us the state of the conditions and affairs of the city. Mayor, if you please come down.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council and community members joining us here at City Hall and at home. As you can see, I went casual to represent our team today, so go Mariners. Tonight during my annual statement of conditions and affairs, I want to reflect on the progress we have made over the past year and share what lies ahead as we continue building a healthier, safer, and stronger Spokane. A Spokane region originally inhabited by the Spokane tribe and other tribes and where currently thousands of urban natives from 300 unique indigenous tribes reside. A Spokane of multi-generational families of Irish, Italian, and German heritage. A Spokane that is now home to those who came as refugees or immigrants pursuing the American dream or escaping political or economic turmoil from Afghanistan, Haiti, and Ukraine. A Spokane of recently arrived residents with most from other states coming from Idaho, California, and Arizona. We are a city of 230,000 residents and a city that spans 69 square miles. We are geographically larger than San Francisco. Our city is home to more than 90 conservation areas and parks, which I can proudly say I have now visited almost every single one, and it's made whole by our 29 unique neighborhoods. We are a city whose services are provided by 2,200 dedicated city employees. Every day, they make sure that clean water flows into your house and they treat the 10.4 billion gallons of wastewater that flows out, all while protecting the river and aquifer. They maintain and plow 2,100 miles of streets. They take away 34 million piles of pounds of recycling, 40 million pounds of organics, and collect about a gazillion million pounds of produce of refuse each year, not to mention your Christmas trees. They answer your calls for help, putting their own lives at risk for our collective safety. So far this year, the Spokane Police Department have responded to 196,000 calls for service. That's over 700 a day. Our firefighters have responded to 44,000 calls, and in non-emergency situations, 311 is there to help, having answered nearly 120,000 calls already this year and 13,000 online reports for city services. Our city employees investigate nuisance properties, pick up illegally dumped garbage, and clean up graffiti. They plan for the 1,000 new residents moving to Spokane each year. They record these meetings so the public has access, fulfill public records requests. They maintain the best park system in the country and the most innovative library system for a city our size in the country as well. Speaking of the library, did you know you can rent out not just books but tools? And you can get tickets to the Theodore or to a professional soccer game in our awesome downtown stadium? Starting this week, people from across Spokane can visit the library to rent out kits full of signs and barricades to host your own neighborhood block party. All of these services are provided by a team that represents less than 1% of our population, and during tough budgets like we have right now, they're on the front lines as we work together to figure out how to maintain quality services with fewer resources. Council President, would you allow us to show our appreciation to them?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much to our city employees. As we know, council, from our work together over the last several months, another deficit has emerged in our general fund. Last year at this time, we faced a $25 million structural deficit. Through tough decisions and by doing more with less, the council voted for a balanced two-year budget. But low consumer confidence as a result of federal policy uncertainty, layoffs, and tariffs, including here in Spokane, at our Office of Safety, the National Institutional Office of Safety and Health, Occupational Safety and Health here in Spokane, that has resulted in lower spending and flat sales tax revenue, not just here but across the state and the nation. In addition, we continue to face rising costs for the products the city purchases, just like households in Spokane. Closing the deficit estimated right now at 13 million will be challenging, but I believe we can do it while minimizing impacts to both the services our residents rely on and the staff who deliver those services. As I have said repeatedly over the last few months, we will address our budget while keeping community safety at the forefront. Last year at this time, Spokaneites in 28 out of 29 neighborhoods voted to support our community safety sales tax, and in the past year, we have made good on the promises we made then. We brought back the fire academy and are making much-needed capital investments in our fire trucks and equipment. We have brought back Neighborhood Resource Officer Program with three officers on the job. I have recently been attending Neighborhood Council meetings. An Officer Micah Prim, Officer Deanna Storch, Officer Tyler Hyman are taking questions and comments from neighborhoods and coming back the next month with information about what they asked about, whether it was nuisance property or problematic traffic intersections. And soon they will be joined by a fourth Neighborhood Resource Officer for the downtown precinct. The traffic unit is back in action and will soon have motorcycles. We are committed to addressing fatalities and serious injuries in Spokane that spiked during the pandemic and we believe can come down with better policies and investments in infrastructure. We have the lowest vacancy rate right now in the Spokane Police Department than we have had in a decade, and as an announcement this evening, I want you to know that Chief Hall anticipates having all authorized commissioned positions filled by May of 2026. We have sustained critical programs in our courts and invested in our Office of Police Ombuds. We can build back our reserves and return to a place of fiscal responsibility while expanding and investing in the community safety measures our community wants and deserves. That work will build on the progress of the past years, which we have been focused on overhauling systems that were not only not utilizing taxpayer resources efficiently but were uncoordinated and provided poor outcomes. As an example, a year ago this month, we closed the Trent Resource and Assistance Center, a congregate shelter in a warehouse. I will remind you that the city was paying $1 million per month to fund that shelter while only seeing roughly one in 10 people exit to housing solutions. With your help, council, we launched our navigation center and scattered site shelters using a model that had proven successful in other cities, including Houston. A key difference in our approach is utilizing churches for small-scale shelters, housing no more than 30 people in each location, and organizing them according to the needs of individuals, such as one for people who have experienced domestic violence and another for those needing medical respite services in partnership with Providence. And we are seeing, and we are seeing success here. More than 40% of the people utilizing our navigation center have placed directly into services and housing. When I came into office, there was no inclement weather plan despite dealing with frigid temperatures every winter and heat and smoke every summer. Thank you, council, for helping us triple our investments in inclement weather sheltering. In the first 10 days of our new coordinated street outreach program, which began just a couple of weeks ago, 100 encampments, each with people present, were engaged by our outreach team and were closed and cleaned by our code enforcement team. And the majority of those present accepted services and were taken to our navigation center to scattered sites or another shelter. Our navigation center now provides day services and is a place where people in need of health can receive housing placement, employment services, access to primary care, mental health care, and addiction treatment. The opioid crisis has taken too big of a toll on our region. Too many families are mourning a loved one, but we are making progress there as well. But let me be clear, the city is not a healthcare provider, and we are not funded to address the public health crisis of opioid addiction. That responsibility and funding in Washington State is held by the regional health districts of each county and the counties. The mental health sales tax that we all pay is also appropriated by Spokane County. We have some good partnerships underway with them and the regional health district, but I call on them to act with urgency to address the behavioral health and substance use disorder treatment gaps that remain in our city. A region our size with our high incidence of addiction-related fatalities and near fatalities should have 24-hour availability of medication-assisted treatment. And as Tony Lodge of the Native Project never fails to remind me, we need an inpatient facility for our youth. They shouldn't have to go across the mountains or to another state to access those services. We need regional partnerships to create them here. The city does have a small stream of opioid settlement funds because of the lawsuits filed against the opioid manufacturers by our Attorney General. Thank you, City Council, for investing those funds in best practices: mobile crisis response teams, sobering beds, and a high-utilizer program. This program identifies individuals cycling through from the street through emergency rooms, shelters, the criminal justice system, and uses a coordinated approach to navigate them off the streets and out of the costly cycle, bringing together outreach workers, law enforcement, code enforcement, providers of shelter and services. We have partnered with Spokane County to fund Maddie's Place for infants born with substance use in their bodies, to fund sobering beds, to expand access to medication-assisted treatment, and to expand co-responder teams in the fire department. We are in support of the county's planned expansion of the Crisis Stabilization Center, which has received state funds. Together, the city and the county has asked the federal government for a unique federal appropriation currently supported by our two U.S. senators that would help us fund our mobile assistance response teams 24/7, 24 hours, 7 days a week. So we look forward to the end of the government shutdown and to Congress passing a new budget that includes that appropriation. The city has an important role to play in disrupting illegal drug supply. Thank you, council, for agreeing to fund a special U.S. attorney to prosecute opioid purveyors and traffickers within the boundaries of the city of Spokane. And thank you to law enforcement officers who participate in special multi-jurisdictional units to investigate and arrest drug suppliers. People are also justifiably upset about open drug use on our streets. So far this year, Spokane police officers have made nearly 700 arrests for drug offenses, including trafficking and possession, and most of these arrests occurred downtown. With the changes we have proposed and that I anticipate council passing to our citywide camping and obstruction ordinance, officers will have more discretion to issue citation to those who resist connections to services or who are encountered frequently in violation of the ordinance. While we are talking about crimes in public space, we also need to recognize that many occur behind closed doors. October is Domestic Violence Action Month, and though, although reported cases are down 9% from last year, domestic violence remains a serious issue in our community, and I salute the providers like the YWCA, Lutheran Community Services, Mujeres in Action, and others who provide services to the victims. If you are a victim of domestic violence, please reach out to a trusted friend or call the 24-hour hotline at the YWCA, 509-326-2255. I'm also supporting the Safe and Healthy Spokane Regional Task Force for some of the more structural changes we need to make together as regional partners. That task force is developing recommendations on how to improve our criminal justice system, both in terms of facilities but even more in terms of effective programming, especially at the intersection of detention facilities and the court system with behavioral health and substance use disorders. Council President Wilkerson, Councilmember Cathcart, and I are serving on an elected committee committed to informing the process, receiving the recommendations, and hopefully implementing them in partnership with other local governments and providers in our region. People that want to see better outcomes are participating in the task force as are members of the business community and people with lived experience. Those recommendations are due in the spring. When it comes to clean and safe, I often hear people compare Spokane to other cities like Houston and Boise, but I want to make sure we understand that there can be a difference between what those cities are experiencing and what we see here. On the west side of the state, for example, private corporations have invested millions in expanding housing supply. In Houston, the oil industry similarly put millions into expanding housing, understanding that addressing homelessness would require more housing options. In the city of Boise, Micron has pledged $1 million to the city of Boise's Supportive Housing Investment Fund to fund supportive services for the unhoused. Here in Spokane, we do not have a single organization or industry stepping up with millions, but what we do have is dozens of faith communities, nonprofits, healthcare partners, and private sector businesses stepping up and investing in solutions. For example, Knox Presbyterian Church, Morning Star Baptist Church, Westminster United Church of Christ are sheltering some of our most vulnerable residents. Dignified Workday is providing employment opportunities to unhoused people who are ready to work, and they have a waiting list that is over 500 people long. 500 people who are unhoused that will work if projects are provided to Dignified Workday. Excelsior Wellness is building an intergenerational living community with youth that are coming out of the foster system and older folks who will act as mentors and live with them in community. Hayden Homes at last week gave the opportunity of homeownership to a deserving local family. Habitat for Humanity, Thrive, Millennial, Working with Thrive, there are many of these, I could go on and on. I have the great advantage of visiting almost every week a nonprofit or an organization that is contributing to the challenges we face. We have some amazing work being done, we need more. So if you want to be part of one of those solutions, please reach out to the organization that you feel most aligned with or to your faith community or civic organization and ask how you can help. Spokane is and always has been the economic heart of a much larger region, nearly a million people. People come here to work, to learn, to see healthcare providers or play, to shop at premier retail locations or very cool small businesses, to eat amazing food, partake in a craft beverage, to run, play hoops, walk or ride their bike along the greatest river gorge and falls in a city in the country. Our hospitals and clinics are a healthcare hub for a region that spans eastern Washington, north Idaho, western Montana. Our universities and trade programs are training the next generation of the workforce, including the doctors, dentists, pharmacists, nurses, and other healthcare professionals that will care for all of us in our retirement. Our sports, arts, music, and entertainment venues bring people together and fuel our local economy. Our school district and parks have created an innovative set of shared projects that will, if voters approve the two measures on the ballot, renovate restrooms in every park, expand educational and recreational opportunities in every neighborhood, create a trades high school, all-weather fields, an indoor aquatic center, and my personal favorite, universal preschool, to help get our kids ready for kindergarten. But as we grow, we face the same challenges that come with success. We need more housing that people can afford. We need better-paying jobs that give people a path to stability. We need more continued investment in economic development so we can keep leading the region forward. The city has a role to play in all of those. We have passed bipartisan housing reform and are again on track to set even more permitting records despite the challenges of inflation, interest rates, and energy retrofits. Our goal is to create 22,000 more housing units in the city by 2046, and we are on track to do that. We specifically are working on more market-rate housing, especially downtown, and more tree canopy and bike and pedestrian safety for every neighborhood grant. Through ARPA grants, we have helped small businesses improve lighting and storefronts. Small improvements can add up to big impacts and make our community safer, brighter, and more inviting. Neighborhoods have prioritized their community development block grant investments in infrastructure and traffic safety improvements. The new Hilliard Creative District is a powerful example of how Spokane's creative economy is taking root and expanding. Northeast Spokane is now a place where artists and makers can collaborate and tell Spokane's stories in new and exciting ways. So now, in addition to the arts on First Friday, you've got Third Thursday in Hilliard. Shakespeare said, "What is the city but the people?" And Spokane's strength has always been its people. We're resourceful, we love the outdoors and our teams, we love our kids and pets, we have a sense of humor, we show up for our neighbors and for people in need. We believe everybody deserves a fair shot. Together, we can make opportunities continue to grow here and to continue to make this a great place to live, work, and raise our kids and enjoy our grandkids. With respect, open minds, open hearts, I know we can continue building a Spokane that is stronger and safer for everyone. Thank you, Council President and members of the council.
Thank you, Mayor, for that look back, almost a year in review, and we appreciate and sometimes forget how much has really taken place. Also, on behalf of council, to all the other city employees that we may never see that's out there every day on the streets, we say thank you and we applaud you as well. So thank you for the good work we're doing, that all doing. All right, council, we have several boards and commission appointments. If we would like them, take them all together or take them separately. Is there any flavor of council?
Council President, we have testimony on board.
Let's do testimony.
First up is Larry Andrews.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. I believe that's it. Go ahead.
Council commentary.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I know that one of the applicants here that we're about to approve, Olga Lucia, if you wave, wave your hand in the audience, just thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being here. Just thank you so much for being here, thank you for applying. Very avid cyclist that, if you ride in Spokane, you know her and I really appreciate you stepping up. Will be a welcome addition to our Bicycle Advisory Board.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dylan. Any other commentary? Again, would you like to take them all together or individually?
Together.
All right, at this point, I guess we're going to take them all together. On the boards and commission, that's under the Hotel Motel TPA, the Plan Commission, the Bicycle Advisory, and the Transportation. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any noes, abstentions? That's passed. Thank you, board members, and we look forward to your commitment and work in those organizations. Next, we have public comment on consent.
Great. And I see somebody signed up with what I don't know if is a real name. Crime is Higher Than Ever, I'm going to call that once if there's anybody online who'd like to speak. And I believe Flushett is also a fake sign-up. So Larry, back to you.
My name's Larry Andrews, I'm in great district, number one. And, and my business is in the greatest district, District 1, too. And I'm here to speak about, I was out doorbelling this weekend. And I, when I grew up, I lived in the Shadle area. And I used to bicycle from Glover, Shadle Park, down to my folks' house, up and down Belt, day and night, okay? And then all the way down to the White Elephant to go get reloading equipment and shells and stuff, and then come back and reload. And when I looked at the amount of money that was spent on Belt Street this year, it was just ludicrous, okay? I mean, we've got boat, I think they're boat bays or floats, every four feet, all the way up and down Belt. We spent probably million-dollar-plus there.
So Larry, are you speaking to a consent item?
Yeah, there's, there's the streets agenda in here.
Okay.
Yeah, the streets. Yeah, it's a ridiculous amount of money that we spent there on Belt. I mean, I, I've ridden that bike down there back and forth for years and never had a problem because the street was fairly wide, okay? But then you went and put all these floats, I think what they are, every four or five feet. It's just ridiculous, the money you spent. And, and your checkbook is like it's blank. I mean, you could have put a few maybe at the Garland intersection or maybe at the street sections, but you put them all the way up. So it's, it's like you have money that's just flows endlessly here. And that's wrong, that's wrong to spend our money like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
That's it?
That concludes public testimony for the consent agenda. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 7-0. Sfister?
Special Budget Ordinance C36767, amending ordinance number C36626, entitled in part, and ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to pay off the Gulf Series 2018 S.I.L.P. loan and declaring an emergency.
No public comment?
Just Larry Andrews.
Oh, Larry? Let's see. I don't see Mr. Andrews in the building or out in the foyer. Any council...
He's just here.
I, I know.
Can you say it one more time for the...
Is Larry Andrews out there? Not seeing. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 7-0.
Emergency Ordinance C36764 of the city of Spokane, Washington, providing for the issuance and sale of a limited tax general obligation refunding bond in the principal amount of not to exceed $340,000 to provide funds to refund the city's outstanding limited tax general obligation refunding bond. 2020 Series J Riverfront Park Iron Bridge taxable. Fixing the date for maturity, interest rate, terms, and covenants of the bond, authorizing the sale and delivery of the bond to the city, declaring an emergency, and providing further matters properly relating thereto.
Just Larry. And I don't know if he's back there.
There he is. Yes, we did, Larry. Understood. So we're speaking to the general obligation bonds?
Yeah. Again, Larry Andrews, home in the first district, our greatest district, of course, and my business is too. I mean, I'm looking at obligation bonds and I'm looking, coming right back to the street thing. I mean, there's no common sense here of the bonds that we're trying to spend and get. And we need people that have reasonable expectations of what Spokane can afford. And then, and we talked, the mayor just talked about this huge deficit that we have. And so we got to make sure the money that we're spending is actually being used to good use. And from what, everything I see here lately, we're, we're overspending so much beyond what we have, it's ridiculous. And then we're putting out on the bond market to go out and buy these bonds to support us, right? Well, if I was an investor, I wouldn't spend any money on you because I think you're going to go into a deficit situation here. And it's crucial. But when you waste money like you did on Belt, that shows you how bad things really are in your spending department. We're not spending the money where we should. We should be getting 45 more officers online so we have the safety in the city. So we don't have 30% deficit on the rentals in the downtown area so we'd have the funding to do some of this stuff. But we don't do what we should. We're just frivolously spending money anywhere we can instead of improving what we need to do. And that is wrong. And, and it comes from the top down. It comes from the mayor and then down to you guys. You guys are the ones that are the purse strings. And I don't know, I don't know anybody that's ever told you you guys are doing a good job spending here. There's many of us that's come told you, if I ran my business like you guys do, I'd be bankrupt 20 years ago. And you can't do that. But yet you continually do it and do it. And now you want us to spend more money on the parks and on the kids' stuff. And we don't even have the officers to do what we need to do. We can't spend money on parks. We've got to get back to the basics, get the line, get the drugs off the street, get the people in reform, and, and get the downtown back so people want to go. When I went out and doorbailed, the people wouldn't even come to the door to me. They would yell to the window and says, "I don't feel safe coming out to talk to you because how bad it is here in this city." They don't want to go downtown. If you go out and doorbell, nobody wants to go downtown. They're all afraid. Thank you. Please change what you're doing.
Thank you, Larry. There's no other public comment on ordinance 36764. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 7-0.
Resolution 2025-83, approving the city of Spokane's 2025 to 2026 federal priorities.
We have Will Hewlings.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings and I live downtown Spokane. I'm here to express my strong opposition to Resolution 20250083, sponsored by council members Dylan and Zepone. This resolution, which outlines the city's, city of Spokane's 2025 through 2026 federal priorities, is deeply flawed and out of touch with reality on our streets. One section highlights Resolution 20240108, supporting federal efforts to stop the smuggling of illicit synthetic drugs. That may sound good on paper, but anyone living in Spokane can see that it's not working. The fentanyl crisis has exploded and overdoses are happening daily. Especially downtown where I live, the situation is worse than ever and no amount of paperwork or resolutions will change that. Another part criticizes so-called executive actions that supposedly harm the city's finances and public safety, thinly veiled language aimed at President Trump. It's disappointing to see the city of Spokane using official resolutions to take partisan jabs instead of focusing on fixing the serious issues affecting residents right here at home. This resolution also claims the city will improve public safety and strengthen the workforce, yet public safety in Spokane is in crisis. People are being assaulted, stabbed, overdosing just blocks from City Hall. Until these basic issues are addressed, these lofty statements mean nothing. Instead of passing politically motivated resolutions, the city should be working with federal leaders, including President Trump and his administration, to secure the resources Spokane desperately needs. Because yeah, we're, we're in deficit. Don't have time to talk about that. But for these reasons, I urge the council to vote no on this resolution. Spokane deserves real solutions, not political theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. That concludes public testimony. Any council commentary? Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank Eric Poulsen, Brian Christensen for working on this. Also, the rest of council here for unanimously supporting the resolution that we passed to protect Medicaid, which is called out in these federal priorities amongst the different buckets, such as protect civil rights and programs essential to the most vulnerable. On the topic of immigration, it really is supporting immigration reform and the humanitarian needs of refugees and asylum seekers to getting a legal status, which I hope is something that, you know, we can all get behind. And then on the two items that came up regarding public safety, the SMART program with the co-deployed mental health teams, the mayor mentioned this, interstate of affairs, to really create that 24/7 ability to respond to those that are in need. We've seen a lot of success with our behavioral health program here in Spokane. It really does help meet folks where they're at and address the needs of folks that are in crisis and also helps support officer capacity. And then with the, this is a long one, Stop Smuggling Illicit Synthetic Drugs on U.S. Transportation Networks Act. I know Chief Hall testified in Congress in support of this legislation. It is bipartisan. Spokane is a fentanyl trafficking hub with being along I-90 and where we are at with the ongoing challenges with addressing this crisis. It's important that we do look at different tools. And this is a federal law that would help provide funding and technology from stopping fentanyl from coming into the city, which again, I hope is something that we can all get behind. And then also excited for some of the capital projects in here, such as the Leeta Bridge, which is a $65 million project. It's, it's huge for the district, it's a critical entry point to the city, and really happy to see this on there and support this resolution.
Councilmember Klitschke?
Yeah, I just also wanted to mention the public safety pieces of our federal agenda. Those 24/7 co-deployed teams would help our officers address issues that are happening on our streets because of the fentanyl crisis and other things like homelessness and poverty. And one of the reasons I think that is so important is because if we have those co-deployed teams out there helping with folks that are not committing crimes but are existing on our streets and possibly being preyed on and changing the environment for our folks that are out there using businesses and other things, then our police have more resources to be out there working on more serious crimes and also improving public safety. It's a win-win for everybody if we were able to get these co-deployed teams up to 24/7 in our community. The, the Stop Smuggling Illicit Synthetic Drugs Act is also an example of us asking the federal government to help out with this very real national crisis that we're struggling with here that is especially affecting Spokane because of that fact that we're a regional hub for those kinds of things and a regional hub for good things as well. So those are us standing up for our needs and our priorities in Spokane. And I think that's exactly what we should be doing with our federal agenda.
Any other council commentary? I'll just add on in support of this, like, let's not forget our land-grant universities. The research also in the medical field, which is a significant amount of funds, not only for the research, but economic employment, the studies that it brings to our region. I think that is critical as well. Seeing no other commentary, please prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 7-0.
Resolution 2025-84, relating to the Spokane Safe Streets for All Fund and Designating Council Priorities for Selection of Projects.
First up is Diane Sutton, and then Eric Lo, and then Larry Andrews.
There are drug markets near our schools and there are drug markets at our schools. We've seen 15 or more kids almost daily lining up at parked cars, buying vapes, maybe harder substances, over the last two months. They stand within 1,000 feet of New Tech Skell Center High School. On Track Academy is next door and Shaw Middle School, a short distance away. 15 or 20 students are hard not to see. And you'll see them there weekdays at 11 o'clock, just north of East Garland Avenue on North Regal Street. And don't worry, the dealers aren't violent, they'll just smirk at you. We've called Spokane Police and New Tech Administration with descriptions of vehicles and patterns, yet no patrols, investigations, or interventions. So we want, we went to the street and talked with the students, assuring them we're not bullying them, that we care about them, but that we can legally record illegal activity. And we've handed them fentanyl education, including our grandson's autopsy. Is this our job? We're 77 and 79 years old. City authorities claim that budget constraints and laws limiting juvenile detentions and police interactions have tied their hands. And schools claim they're only, they're here only to educate. Well, interaction and education mean nothing anyway if the student is too dead. And with fentanyl, that vape, with the equivalent of only a few grains of salt, will cause death. The inaction on Spokane's streets is unacceptable amid Spokane's county, county's overdose crisis. State Representative Lauren Davies, Davis, I'm sorry, admitted in her October 12 Seattle Times op-ed that she feels, quote, culpable, unquote, for, quote, "well-intended but flawed," unquote, "measures which have spiraled a juvenile crime." Open-air drug dealing in Spokane at schools for our most vulnerable students or at any Spokane school will predictably, probably, go on tomorrow. Thank you, business, for being here tonight. But where are our youth programs? Where are our pastors? Where is the rest of our community? Are we the boiled frog? Warped virtue signaling, allowing this, has become Spokane's municipal... Warped virtue signaling allowing this has become Spokane's municipal identity. There's nothing virtuous about leading the nation in fentanyl death. Please join Lauren Davis' newly found culpability.
Good evening. First, I want to thank this body for taking the traffic safety crisis on our streets seriously and for adopting the Jan Man Safe Streets Now resolution last year. I believe it is an extremely good use of the Safe Streets Fund to construct the 27 by 2027 Greenways Network. I also feel that the more money spent on adaptive traffic projects, the better. I've previously taken the mayor's administration to task for what I viewed as a lack of urgency when it comes to installation of adaptive projects. I still feel the administration could be doing more in that regard, but first, a budget must be allocated by the city council. To give you an example of the scale of impact the city can have when spreading limited dollars across cheaper adaptive projects, I want to point to Spokane Reimagines latest endeavor. A few weeks ago, for the National Week Without Driving, we distributed 29 bus benches across Spokane, one for each of Spokane's 29 neighborhoods. While we completed this task with donated materials from Ziggy's Home Improvement and Ace Hardware, as well as the labor of dozens of volunteers, we recognize that the city cannot replicate our success at a similar cost. But there is something to be said for our bottom-up approach to infrastructure improvements. This was just the first step in Spokane Reimagines plans to reclaim the public realm for people, and we have already begun work on our next service-based projects. Last week, I CC'd the city council on an email I sent to the Spokane Transit Authority Board of Directors. That email encouraged STA to be more proactive in finding cost-effective improvements for their bus stops. In 2009, over 200 advertising benches were removed from Spokane sidewalks as they violated city ordinances regarding advertising. STA's Board of Directors subsequently voted against replacing about half of those benches. While there are still some advertising benches in Spokane, the result of a later contract between the city and a different advertising company, we're still at a net negative from where we were before the mass removal in 2009. The onus should be on STA to add more benches at its stops throughout the public transportation benefit area, and I sincerely hope that the city's representatives on the STA board push the agency to pursue cheaper seating options than the $12,000 shelters they've cited as their only option in local news stories. I also encourage the city of Spokane to continue thinking bigger and bolder when it comes to economical transportation infrastructure improvements. We're beginning to see the fruits of your labor, but there is still much work to be done. Thank you.
My name's Larry Andrews. I live in the great District 1, and I have a business in District 1. And I've lived here since 1958, and I've seen the city go downhill severely in the last 10 years, to the point it's unrecognizable. And when I was outdoor bailing again, I stood at the corner until the traffic cleared before I could get across the street. When we had enough officers here, we never did that before. So you can spend all your money on your lights and your fancy bells and everything, but it's not going to change the problem. The problem is there's no enforcement out here on our streets. And the kids are going to be at the one they're going to lose because they're going to come across and hit one of them again. And it's going to happen again and again and again because we have no enforcement on our streets. That's because we're 45 to 100 officers down from where we used to be. And I don't know how the mayor ever thinks in 2026 that we'll be back to where we were. That's a big joke by her, okay? And it isn't very funny, okay? Because it's our kids. And Councilman Klitschke, it is important to enforce the small laws so the people start to recognize there is a law here in this city. And when you don't enforce the little stuff, it goes to the big stuff. And the big stuff gets bigger and bigger and bigger to the point to where we are now, where there is no enforcement to speak of. You never see hardly anybody at our schools in the morning enforcing the traffic laws, okay? That used to be always done. In front of our schools, there were motorcycle cops or regular police officers there all the time doing enforcement. And it's not happening. In fact, you can watch them now, and they just let it go. You know why? Because you don't want the enforcement. Until you people change what you do and change your attitude from the top down, this will never stop. It's only going to get worse. And you can spend millions upon millions and throw it down the tube, and we'll lose more and more kids all the time. That thing that you did up and down belt was totally unnecessary if you would have had the proper people there. In fact, one of the officers used to live right on Garland, and he was a motorcycle officer. And he took pride in making sure that the kids were safe. But we don't have those people anymore because you don't authorize them to do what they need to do. You've pulled away from all that, and you think you can make it up with money and fancy signs. Well, it doesn't happen. Until you get people back enforcing the laws, we're going to have this problem and lose kids.
That concludes public comment. Any council commentary? Councilmember Klitschke?
I'll just say that these safety projects that are mentioned here are infrastructure projects. They're design projects. They're not in lieu of enforcement. They take a little bit of umbrage of the idea that our law enforcement officers are not enforcing our traffic rules. I regularly do ride-alongs with my officers. I meet with my precinct captain every month. They are out there enforcing the laws. There's never going to be a police officer on every street corner unless we want to be paying more taxes than probably most of our salaries can afford. So we do have to do infrastructure and design solutions. We've had signs, like you've mentioned, for years. When I was on the Pet Committee, probably 15 years ago, we were talking about those signs and deploying those signs. We used to have a special week that we put them out every month. That's a Spokane tradition, so that's not anything new. We're not, none of this stuff is in lieu of. We have to have a both-and approach to public safety. And these Safe Streets for All Fund projects will be a mixture of adaptive design and more permanent infrastructure solutions, but we can't just rely on enforcement to change behavior. There's not going to be a police officer every time somebody thinks about speeding. Street design matters a lot. That's my background and area of expertise, and it's data-driven solutions that when you retrofit a street with more safe design, you get better public safety results. That's just reality.
Thank you. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I really appreciate, I think, the foresight in these projections and allocated this funding. Thank you, councilmembers opponent for championing this. And really, I think when we think about our traffic calming projects and what makes 27 by 27 critical to fund is a fundamental shift in how we look at accessibility and connectivity in the city to provide safer streets and safe passageway. Also, Spokane Reimagined, the bus benches look amazing. Thank you so much for doing that. One other just hope with this resolution is I hope it does underscore a need that, you know, this council has really been trying to raise the issue on, and that is our automatic safety cameras, our traffic cameras. It's something that I think we need to continue to advocate for because that does help, one, fund a lot of these projects, and two, fundamentally shift a lot of the driver behavior. So looking forward to more advocacy on that.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Councilmembers opponent?
Yeah, I'm excited to support this. I think that we all want safer streets and that this is a step in the right direction. And I've been glad to be championing this and supporting it, and thank other council members for their advocacy on this, too. And the administration for being creative on different solutions that we can bring to our streets. I think two things that this is really solidifying here is adaptive projects and quick-build projects. When I got on council four years ago, there were no adaptive or quick-build projects. And now we're starting to see those being built through our city, started as pilots, and now we're allocating a certain dollar amount. I think it was about a half million dollars for 2026. And those are projects that can be built quickly in our neighborhoods, and we're seeing neighborhoods that are requesting those more and more to make their streets safer. So that's really exciting. And then just to echo that this has the infrastructure-built environment and the interconnected part of 2027, and it still has the neighborhood projects that we've talked to and gone to neighborhood councils about, too. So it's really meeting lots of different objectives with the funding. Absolutely, we will keep pushing and advocating for more automatic safety cameras, too.
Great. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Nay.
Thank you. That's six one.
Resolution 2025-85, setting hearing before city council for November 17, 2025, for the vacation of the alley between College Avenue and Bridge Avenue and between Summit Boulevard and Lyndecky Street, as requested by owners having an interest in real estate abutting the right of way.
There's no public comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
Resolution 2025-86 of the city of Spokane, authorizing the amendment of the city of Spokane's administrative policy and procedure titled Investments.
Larry?
One public comment?
Yeah, Larry Andrews from the great District 1, number one, and in my business in great District 1. I think you're investing in the wrong thing, and it was really evident this last weekend. I mean, the people don't even stop at the stop signs anymore. They just, they didn't even look. I mean, they just went right through when I was out there. And that's because of enforcement. So we're not investing in the right things. We need to invest in our officers out there, and they don't have to be on every street corner there, Mrs. Klitschke. They need to be out in enforcement and doing what they should be. They need to be targeting areas where the kids are and making sure people actually stop at the stop sign. Today, the lady didn't stop, and she almost took the back end of my truck off, okay? And the only thing that saved my bottom was I had a great acceleration on my truck and kept her from hitting the back end.
Yeah, Larry, this is on investments?
This is investments. We need to invest in people and not in infrastructure so much. We need to invest in officers to get what we need done here. And I believe strongly in investing in people because at least people will start doing what they're supposed to. And I just, I'm to the point of, I don't know how many accidents have happened and the amount of money that we waste here because of what we're doing in the direction we're going.
So Larry, this is actually just speaking to the investment policies. It's not on streets.
Right. I think our policies need to change on how we're investing our money in this city, okay? And it is not improving. It is getting worse. And so those investments need to put out to, they don't even pull any people over anymore. I watched the officer. The guy ran the stop sign, and he kept right on going. And he was right there. You know why? Because the mayor doesn't want him to get stopped. They don't want the people stopped for doing this stuff. They don't want to spend the time on these little issues, Ms. Klitschke. I'm sorry. But until we have several more bad accidents where people are hurt, we're going to keep doing the wrong thing until people are outraged at what you're investing in. And that's wrong. We don't have the money to put a stoplight at every corner or those flashing lights that you guys have been doing. What we do have is a deterrent if we could use it. So people recognize there is an issue if you're not doing what the law says. Thank you.
Thank you. In respect for Larry, I don't think anybody wants anyone to get hurt from the mayor on down. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
You've got Councilmember Cath.
Oh, Councilmember Cath Card.
Yeah, thank you. This is on the investment policy, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So I'll be very brief. I will not be supporting this. I do appreciate Matt Boston bringing this forward and trying to think outside the box with regards to our large deficit, but to me, this is just a little too risky. You look around the state, and the numbers just demonstrate that no other, well, I think all except for one, cities are expanding their investment allowance to this size. And I just, I can't in good conscience see us put ourselves in that situation where, you know, we're going to run our reserves down, we're going to increase the amount of debt we have, and I just don't see how this ultimately becomes a sustainable solution to anything. And so I will just be voting no on this option tonight.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Nay.
Thank you. That's five to two.
Resolution 2025-87 of the city of Spokane, establishing underwriting guidelines for the Spokane Internal Lending Program.
Larry Andrews here, great District 1. I live here and got my business here. Internal borrowing programs, I think we need to pull back from the borrowing, okay? And I think we've got to start living with what we get, what we have, and cut back by 10%. It's so easy to borrow from here, to pay from there, but we need to learn to hold back and run with what we have. And for so long, we've been just counting on the feds to prop us up and to keep feeding us this money, this money, this money, this money, this money, this money. You know, that's why we're $37 trillion in debt, and guess who's going to have to pay for all this? All our kids. And we can't, we can't put that burden on our kids anymore. We've got to cut back. We can't be borrow from Peter to pay Paul anymore. We've got to learn to live with what we have and make use of, betterly, of what we do get. And until we start learning this, we're going to dig ourselves deeper and deeper into debt. And to borrow from one to another is not something that we should be doing, I don't believe. I believe we need to stand on our own two feet here in this city. I believe that it's good to teach our kids this, too, so they learn what it is to live within a fiscal budget and to have some backing behind us. So when things go bad, we have the reserves here to hucker down and do what needs to be done, and just like any family here would have to do. We don't keep borrowing and borrowing and borrowing internally or externally to do this. We need to have realistic budgets, which I think has been one of the biggest problems here in this city. The management from the top down, and you people need to be governing better than what you are. You need to tighten up those purses, and we need to scrutinize what we're doing with our funds and making sure that what we're spending on, we can afford. And I really don't believe that's been happening here because it's just so easy to think, well, I can go get another bond here, or I can get some more money from the government, and they're going to, you know, they're going to give us a million dollars if we kick in 500,000. Well, you know what? The United States needs to say, hey, we need to slow down on this spending and make everything responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. No other public comment? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. That's five to two. Thank you. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-88 of the City of Spokane, Washington, providing for the issuance and sale of certain individual limited tax general obligation refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $6,611,000. Establishing interfund loan facilities from the Spokane Investment Pool to refinance existing interfund loans, fixing the dates, forms, maturities, interest rates, terms and covenants of the bonds, authorizing the sale and delivery of the bonds to the city and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Larry Andrews, Great District One, and my business in Great District One. I think we need to have people working in the city that are making our money go as far as we can. And if we can refinance at a lower rate, we should do it and, and make those things happen. So we, we need people in the financial situation in this city to be looking where we can save those, you know, sometimes refinancing at a lower rate, which the rates just dropped down. We should be doing that, okay? And making our funds last longer. We, we have to take advantage when we can, when there isn't any risk to speak of, and we need to be doing that. And so if we can refinance some of these bonds at a cheaper rate and, and pay them down, let's do that. I would be in great support of that. But I think it goes beyond that. We need to have somebody that really analyzes the budget here, like several CPAs in this city that really look closely at how we're spending our money and how we can control what we're spending. And, and, and it's not the average worker out here. Those people give their heart and souls for this city, but they need to manage, the managers need to start managing what we're doing, how we're doing it, and making sure that they're getting the best price for the best things that they can. And that, and that starts from every manager on and it really comes from the top down. The top down and you people approve all this money that we spend. And, and we need you guys to start really spending some extra time and seeing what we're spending our money on and reducing what we're doing because we don't have the money coming in and it isn't going to happen for quite a while because with 30% vacancy down in, in the downtown area, just think what if you had those 25% filled up and you had 5% vacancy? We probably wouldn't be having this discussion right now. So we, we need to really start charging up the downtown, cleaning up the downtown. And I mean, I called 311 twice this last week for the, I think the sixth time in the Medelia Overload Pass where, I don't know how many times the people have cleaned out the Medelia Overhead Pass. And, and I, and I bet you spent $20,000 on that one overpass cleaning it up. Now you can't, you can't tell me that's a good spending of our money and it continues and it just keeps cycling around and around and around. You're breaking us.
Thank you, Larry. Your time is up. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes six to one.
Resolution 2025-89, approving the appointment of Trace Bradburn as Director of Solid Waste for the City of Spokane.
No public comment? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That's seven zero.
Resolution 2025-77, regarding amendment of the City of Spokane Water and Hydroelectric Rules and Regulations of Water System Installations.
My name's Larry Andrews. I live in the City of Spokane and I have a business in the Great District One, both of them. I would like to see, are these new rules or the old rules that we're trying to propose? Because I've always felt the water department here in this city has done a tremendous job. And so I tried to find the rules, the new regulations, and I, I haven't been able to find them. So do we have new rules or are we running off the old rules? That's my first question because I, I wasn't able to find these rules, but, but there's probably a thousand pages in, in this thing tonight. And I think it's, I mean, we knew we had the Seahawks playing tonight and we also had the Seattle Mariners playing tonight. So I, I really feel like a lot of this is trying to get slipped through tonight so that, that, that what's going on. So the water rules really help a lot in my business because we, we follow these rules all the time. And so I'd sure like to see what the rules were. If anything, I'd like to see you, if there are new rules, I'd like to see you postpone them so, so, so some of us in the plumbing industry could review the new rules that you want to propose. And I, and I, for the life of me, I couldn't find any new rules. So I, I'm asking for some additional time if we have any new rules so we could, the people of our industry that actually put the water pipes in and deal with the city would have the time to review these rules. And I think that's only a reasonable, a reasonable request and I would hope that you would allow that. If it's the same rules, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the same rules. We've, we've done well with them over these years, but if we're going to, if we're going to instigate some new rules, I think we need to have time for us contractors to take a look at what they are and then get back to you on them, okay? Because I haven't had any, any outreach to us about these new rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any council commentary? Councilmember Klitschki?
You're going to see a few of these coming up on our agendas as we formally adopt the manuals that our city has been using for years. These are much like the ASHTO guidelines for streets, although I don't remember what these are called, but they're basically the industry standard national manuals that we've been referring to all along, but in an effort to improve our code and have better governance here at the City of Spokane, we are starting to formally adopt these type of rules that we refer to instead of just casually having them in on hand.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes seven zero.
Resolution 2025-78, regarding the adoption of a public rule for the wastewater management department for side sewer installation handbook.
No public comment?
There's no public comment? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes seven zero.
Resolution 2025-80, to be considered under hearings item each one, although it was deferred. Ordinance C 36732, renaming the housing local sales fund to the Hart Fund, adopting a new section 8.07(c).051, amending section 7.08.155, 8.07(c).020, 8.07(c).030, and repealing sections 8.07(c).050 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
No public comment?
No public comment? Any council commentary? Councilmember Dillon.
Excited to finally see this move forward. We had some really good discussions up here and amendments on the dais. It's funny, after standing with many of you at the Liberty Expansion Apartments in District Two to mark the introduction of this ordinance, you know, there's been a lot of discussion obviously about the, the home ordinance and the last pillar of that E economic security, which this ordinance really falls under. We know that one-third of renters are paying more than 50% of their monthly income on costs and are rent burdened. People's costs are not lining up with what they, what they make. And so really, this is, I think, an important step for Spokane. I think it does provide us with that flexibility between capital construction costs for affordable housing as well as much needed services. At the end of the day, I think a safer community is a place where you can rest your head at night and that's what this ordinance does.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I'll try to be brief on this. So I had introduced an amendment back, well, a couple of months ago, as Councilmember Dillon had mentioned, and the reason that I did that was I just, I feel that we have an opportunity in front of us to address a pretty urgent and significant need, one that's growing every day, every month, every year. And while my first four years on council, well, I guess minus the first year because this didn't, didn't get adopted until the end of 2020, I have been a staunch defender of these dollars to make sure that they go towards capital for housing. And I think that that is, has been a significant need and don't get me wrong, it continues to be a significant need. But as I have observed the process that we have gone through, despite what our code says, we've ignored that process over and over again. I don't believe we have tried to prioritize maximizing the number of units. We've, you know, put a lot of dollars into existing units, which, don't get me wrong, a lot of positive and good comes from that, but my belief was that these dollars really should have been for new units at the lowest construction price that we can, still meeting, of course, habitability standards and whatnot. But I just haven't seen that. And earlier today in this meeting, the mayor made a comment that the city should not be in the business of healthcare. And while I actually do agree with her on that conceptually, I, I believe it really belongs with the state and the state has failed time and time again to step up and fund the mental health supports that we need. I don't agree and I know for a fact that the money does not exist to support pushing that issue over to the SRHD. And even if, I, I believe even if the county were to completely defund their courts in order to free up mental health tax dollars, I don't believe that it would still pay for functionally what we need. Now, we need partners, we need to be regional, but at the end of the day, we are sitting in a situation where we have 1,590 money and we have opiate dollars, both of which could be used for the establishing behavioral health and drug treatment facilities in the City of Spokane. And I don't believe that, that we should push that off into other jurisdictions or other regional partners or suggest that somehow it's not our problem, but it's theirs. I believe that we have an opportunity right now to do what we need to do. And with my amendment, it would have prioritized the use of, of these dollars for that purpose. Now, it would still allow for housing because that is an intended use of these dollars, but it would have also narrowed it, the priority around housing to maximizing the number of units that we could with these dollars. And so I continue to have a lot of frustrations with this direction. I think we're going to see status quo, just kind of more run-of-the-mill kind of stuff that we have seen the last three or four years and not the substantial game-changing opportunity that these dollars, even though I did not vote to support this in 2020, but that these dollars could be contributing to, be it an expansion of housing or, as I believe today, the, the priority really truly is on the treatment side. And so I just cannot support this ordinance tonight. I, I really do hope there's a provision in here that each March, council can pass a resolution stating our priorities. And I really do hope that, that any RFPs that go out will abide by and follow those priorities and that council will, you know, not simply give in and support whatever is, comes our way if they don't follow those priorities. But my frustration with the process and how this has been operated and, and, and utilized, particularly the last few years, is just subpar and, and not where I think it should be. And so I'm not going to support this ordinance tonight. I do think we can make some changes that would vastly improve this and the overall system, but we're not there.
Thank you, Councilman McCathcart. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes five to two.
Ordinance C 36733, establishing the Affordable Housing Permit Fee Deferral Program, adopting a new chapter 8.21 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Will Quinn is our one public comment.
Will? Will Quinn?
Okay, Will Quinn, Spokane Mom and Pop Landlord. A chat about zoning, codes and affordable housing. In June of 2018, I purchased a property represented as a seven-unit multifamily apartment building constructed in 1976 and located at 1318 West Mallon, a mere half block from the courthouse. At the time, the building housed five residential units and two units that had previously been leased as law offices. The selling realtor stated that with minimal effort and expense, they could be placed back as residential units. My buddy and I accomplished this in just under three days. They have been leased as residential since August of 2018. Fast forward, in July of this year, I entered into an agreement to sell the property. The buyer discovered that the building had been rezoned from a seven-unit multifamily to a five-unit, two-unit commercial mixed use in 2013. The realtor, of course, had not divulged this information to me. We then began to take the appropriate steps to obtain the correct zoning designation. I approached the city planning department and was presented with a list of demands necessary to accomplish this endeavor. Number one, units are to be treated as new construction. Number two, provide site planning, site plan drawings. That cost me 1,447 bucks. Three, install six heat recovery ventilator units. Costs 11,000. Anybody know what those are? I don't. I still don't. Install a fire sprinkler system with a 13R designation. 88,000 plus dollars. Permits, four to 5,000 dollars. Total 105 grand plus dollars to convert two 800 square foot units back to residential units that had been residential from 1976 to 2013 and erroneously from 2018 to the present. The sheer idiocy of these stipulations is only exceeded by my own indisputable profound idiocy in having failed to verify the zoning when I purchased the property. With this disclosure, I'll be removing myself from the 2025 smartest guy in the room competition. Mr. Flynn, if you're here, you're safe. Conclusion, I of course will...
And thank you. Your time is up.
Is that three minutes?
Yes, it was. I know.
Good thing I'm up for open forum.
Come back again.
I'll be, I'll be back.
Any council commentary on this one? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Oh, Councilmember Cathcart, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll again be, be voting no on, on this ordinance tonight, but I really do appreciate the, the concept and bringing, and the administration bringing the concept that leads forward. You know, I served on, in fact, with Councilmember Klitschki, we both served on the infill task force back in, I think it was 2016. And one of the recommendations that came out of that group was deferral of permit fees because it is a significant barrier. In fact, right in the purpose of this proposed ordinance, it says, permit fees related to housing development, construction or rehabilitation represent a significant hurdle to housing development in Spokane. And so I offered what I thought was a very, very modest compromise that would have just modestly expanded consideration of this to workforce level housing. And, and rather than focusing solely on the lower income affordable units, in fact, ones that have to qualify for certain programs, but to try to get... but to try to get to that level of the, the ma and pa, so-called developer, who are trying to build, you know, essentially a fourplex, or some kind of a, a small housing option. And those permit fees are a barrier. There's not a lot of products out there that they can access that, you know, would, would allow them to get past that if they don't already have those dollars in the bank. So I really feel that there's a, just a better way to go. It doesn't take much of a tweak to this ordinance. And I think that we would see a, a much better outcome for housing across the city if we would consider expanding this even to just workforce housing. And I do believe there are mitigations, there are protections, there are all kinds of things that we can put in place that would, that would protect the city in the case of those dollars, making sure that we don't lose money in, in a program like this. With a little bit of work, I believe we could get there. And so for that reason, I will not be supporting this, this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Cathcart. Councilmember Klitsky?
Thank you. I, I think that that's an interesting idea to entertain that Councilmember Cathcart brings up. I'm going to go ahead and vote for this tonight, and we can keep an eye on it and see how much of a success rate we get. But I think that's certainly an idea that we should explore if this isn't giving us the results that we're hoping to see, because as we know, there's kind of this concept of the housing ladder, and most types of housing that are missing are kind of the lower-income and missing-middle housing that Councilmember Cathcart is talking about. So that may also contribute. But what this does is it allows a development to defer their permit fees until the development is finished, instead of right up front when they're trying to finance the project. So it's kind of one of those in a hundred other policies that we have that we're using to try to increase affordable housing in the community, and we could definitely look at expanding it in the future.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Nay.
Thank you. That's six-zero.
Six-one.
Six-one. Was it six-one? Sorry.
Did, did my vote not come through?
Yes, Councilman Cathcart. I did not have my glasses on.
No.
Ordinance C 36751, granting Marathon Pipeline LLC a limited liability company chartered in the state of Delaware the non-exclusive right, privilege, authority, and franchise to construct, operate, maintain, remove, replace, and repair existing pipeline facilities, together with equipment and apparatuses thereto for the transportation of petroleum products and byproducts in the public right-of-way within and through the city of Spokane, Spokane County, Washington.
Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Seven-zero.
Ordinance C 36753, making technical corrections to chapters 8.02, 10.29, 12.01, 12.02, 13.03 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and technical corrections to titles 17A, 17C, 17D, 17F, and 17G of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Larry Andrews.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Prepare to vote. Thank you. That's seven-zero.
First reading ordinances, Ordinance C 36765 relating to city of Spokane employee retirement provisions and amending sections 3.05.210 and 3.05.260 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C 36766 relating to solid waste Spokane Municipal Code sections 13.02.0568, .0560, and adopting new section 13.02.564 to chapter 13.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and setting an effective date. And Ordinance C 36752 concerning adoption of public rules by the city of Spokane and creating new chapters 3.14, 10.21, 12.14, 15.07, and 18.12 of the Spokane Municipal Code, amending sections of titles 1, 3, 4, 8, 10, 12, 13, and 16A of the Spokane Municipal Code, and adding new section 3.07.350 to the Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Larry Andrews.
Larry? Thank you. No other public comment on first reading. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. We will now transition into open forum. You have two minutes. Please direct all your comments to the chair.
First up is Noah Dickens, and then Will Quinn, and after that, Rick Bochuk. Noah? And then Will, if Noah's not here?
Will?
I'm sorry. So conclusion. I, of course, will not be applying for a mixed-use-to-residential conversion. My tenants have been posted and are being moved to newly renovated two-bedroom apartments that I have available, with their damaged deposits intact. This will result in a two-unit net loss to our city's rental pool unless a variance or waiver can be obtained. I don't have a clue if that can be done, folks. Will Quinn, Spokane Mom and Pop Landlord, a continuation. The 1318 West Mallon 2013 change of use consisted of the following. Installation of French doors and a common wall thereby connecting the two units. Installation of crown molding throughout both units. Unit one, bathroom remodel and installation of bookshelves in a living room. Unit two, remove the refrigerator range and upper cabinets, leaving the lower cabinets and a sink. That's it. They moved desks into bedrooms, called them offices. They moved a long table into a living room, surrounded it with chairs, filled up the new bookcases with law books, and called it a conference room. This experience has led me to the following conclusion. Zoning issues should be treated and resolved on a case-by-case basis. Let's see, what else I've got? I'd be more than happy to arrange an onsite visit, should anyway be, anyone be interested, so you could look at the two units. Oh, and by the way, the property is more valuable as a mixed, mixed use than it is with all seven. So it's not like I'm here going, hey, I need this seven. It's worth more that way. So anyway, thanks very much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Will. Good to see you.
Next up, if Noah's not here, is Rick. Go ahead, Rick. Noah Dickens, if you're here.
I know that when the elected officials here, you know, when they, they get elected, you take an oath to uphold the Constitution, and you have lots of privilege, more privilege than everybody else here. You can go places that we can't. And then now, just going back to like, say, our Constitution, if you don't understand the Constitution, and I think some people don't, you have access to attorneys, constitutional lawyers, and you can ask them pretty much any question you want. Now, as far as the First Amendment goes, part of your oath is to protect my First Amendment. If, as long as I'm not making a threat, then you don't be walking away from me and saying, I'm not going to talk to you. Don't do that. You take an oath to uphold the Constitution. It doesn't matter if you agree with me. What you need to understand is that you are there to defend my rights. Now, I'm going to go back to what I'm hearing, all this bad stuff that happens downtown. You know, I use the First Amendment, like, see, in entertainment in the parks, and I work with other people that use the First Amendment for entertainment in the parks. And we have a strong, happy community that you don't, most people don't see. See, because I look at, our First Amendment is also to build community. And what we keep hearing, oh, it's not being, well, get out there and start building it, instead of complaining about it. Interact with people. When they go downtown, they see all these people having a hard time. They don't interact with them. They look down on them. They don't even talk to them. They don't want to talk to them. Interact with their people. They're the, we're all people, and that's how you start creating change, is by interacting, by being part of it. But instead of being separate from it. Thank you.
Next up is Greg Thomas, and then Will Hewlings.
Good evening, Council President Wilkerson, members of the council, and Mayor Brown, who I guess is gone. I took a look at your mission statement on the front of the agenda, which reads, "To deliver efficient and effective services that facilitate economic opportunity and enhance quality of life." How's it going? Not so good. Downtown and its surrounding area are total mess. Vacancy rates increase while tax revenue decreases. Homeless camps keep moving around. I counted at least 12 driving home from church yesterday. I called 311, but there was nobody home. I punched option after option after option to no avail. Why is it even necessary putting that responsibility on the public? And why do you, I mean, the five-to-two majority-left progressives continue to fight every lofty battle except the most important ones to the citizens and taxpayers of the city? I hear it from briefings that I attend. I hear things like emergency ordinances, and that your decisions are data-driven, and that's how they shape policy. Well, I just look around. Your decisions, or lack thereof, are ruining the city that I call home for over 50 years. 200 police officers short. 500 homeless beds short, courtesy of the Trent Shelter closing. And sadly, we're on track for 500 drug overdose deaths this year. I also read a misclassification of millions of taxpayers' dollars, and on and on and on it goes. Please, counsel.
Thank you, Greg. Your time is up.
Get back to basics. Thank you.
Will, and then Brad Barnett, and after that, Earl Moore.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown Spokane. I need to speak tonight about what's happening right outside my apartment downtown, just blocks from here. Because what I see every single day is absolutely disgusting and unacceptable. Every time I walk out my front door, it's like I'm stepping into chaos and decay. It's heartbreaking, it's infuriating, and it's shameful that this has been allowed to happen in the heart of our city. Are you guys paying attention? I know you drive past where I live. Let's be honest, I hold Mayor Lisa Brown responsible for much of this mess. Since taking office and shutting down the Trent Shelter, downtown Spokane has spiraled out of control. The homeless and drug-addicted population has exploded. When they cleared out Second and Division, those people weren't helped. They were simply pushed downtown into, into downtown and other neighborhoods. Our side, on our sidewalks and our doorways. But I'm not going to read anymore, because you guys got my speech. And I speak, speak about this all the time. But it's pretty sad that night, at 3:00 in the morning, I hear people screaming out on the sidewalk, fighting or whatever their reason is. But it's just sad knowing that they're out there probably freezing. And little Lisa Brown and your little home initiative, that little ordinance, is a joke. Talking about you cleaning up encampments in 10 days, 90-something. You ain't doing nothing out in front of the Ridpath where I live. It's disgusting. But anyways, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Brad, and then Earl, and then after Earl, Sunshine Wigan.
Good evening, council. Brad Barnett, Spokane, President Spokane Business Association, representing 213 member businesses and almost 13,000 employees in Spokane. About a week and a half ago, SBA held a press conference and unveiled our blueprint legislation of how we feel, and our businesses' members feel, that we need to solve the problems that we're dealing with downtown. I will say, I've had a number of productive conversations with several of the council members, and Gavin has as well. I am encouraged by the potential of really all sides coming together to actually pass effective ordinances. So I would continue to ask that we do this, and do it in a timely manner, and get this across the finish line, because we know once a decision is made, and really with the recognition that, as legislators, what you do is only half the battle. So if you guys pass the right ordinance, which we really encourage you to continue to work on, then it falls on Mayor Brown to actually enforce the law. So we really encourage both sides of this equation to work for this common goal. SBA, if you saw one of the two ads we had in the newspaper yesterday, it was very clear at the top, homelessness is a national problem. And homelessness is not illegal. What is illegal is open drug use. What is illegal is the open selling of drugs and illegal camping on our public sidewalks. So we really encourage this body and the mayor to work together, that unified front, that we put enough law enforcement on the street and engage them. And at the end of the day, one of the other things the ad said is say yes to treatment, but no to illegal activity. So we're not insensitive. We need to get these people help that are dealing with drug addiction. But unless they have that threat of incarceration, unfortunately, they're not going to do it most of the time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Earl, and then Sunshine, and then Aaron Miller.
Earl Moore, District 3. In 2024, the mayor was given a balanced budget. It was approved by city council. I think that's the law, that they have to do that. But now we have a deficit. Not exactly sure what is going on because of all of the smokes and screen and behind-the-scenes shenanigans that have gone on in this council. I believe spending is out of control. Administration staff have been added, additional cabinet members have been added, have been added, and all with approval, I think somewhat from you, this council. Also, there is the fiasco of SREC. What happened there? Part of that will be setting up that independent CAD system, which will cost the city about 5.5 million, which is double what the city would have had to pay if they'd have stayed with SREC. And I'm not even looking at what is going to happen in the next 5 to 10, 15 years. It's going to be millions, millions of dollars. I know some of you, okay, monies have been poured into the homeless situation in our city. I know some of you on this council believe that the homelessness in our city has improved. You are sorely mistaken. If you would drive around the city, I do, and see what I see, they, it has not decreased. They've just moved. I live up north. I drive home sometimes from work at 10:30, 11 at night. They're in the viaducts. They're up around the Shadle Tower. They're everywhere. And then I say, oh, my goodness, what are you doing in the West Hills? Nothing. You are creating havoc. My goodness, you have created so much havoc in this city in this past couple of years. But I will continue to pray for our city, and I continue to pray for all of you and all of us here for unity. We need unity. And I thank you all for everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
Sunshine, and then Aaron Miller, and after that, James Cant.
Sunshine Wiggins, born in Spokane, homeless. Thanks to Derek Schaefer's family for speaking out about his murder. Over 25 convictions, bipolar psychosis, meth psychosis, drug use, seven domestic violence attacks, three attacks on me, threats to harm, and be, me be harmed by my kid. A violent offender girlfriend mentally ill threatens to hurt me. Journal entries of voices telling him to kill animals and people. Shot someone with a zip gun in the neck. DOC only giving 10 to 15 days for violations. All I can do as a parent is make reports of this, and the risk of, who is at risk of getting murdered in his journal entries to protect myself and that person? He is an adult. It is, I'm unable to lock him up. There is a law in Washington to warn people at risk of being murdered. The cops contact the person when I make my reports. Allegedly, Andre Moore killed my friend Derek. My kid is the next Andre, and the laws don't help me. They are not going to help prevent the murders that my kid is planning. Thank you.
Aaron? And then James Cant? Aaron, and then James Cant. Aaron or James here? Okay, Larry Andrews.
My name's Larry Andrews, and I've said everything already once tonight. I'd like to quote the Spokane Municipal Code, section zero-one-point-zero-seven-point-zero-zero-three. This chapter should be titled and referred to as the Spokane Fair Election Code. The purpose of this chapter is to institute regulations for fair conduct of electricians and, uh, citywide officers to ensure high degree of transparency in the conduct of local elections. The city intends to enact this chapter to provide transparency, fairness, accountability, and integrity in the conduct of elections for the city office, to promote and increase political parts, participation, and open discussion. Issues, and to reduce the effect of financial contributions on the integrity of our election and our government. As a citizen of this city, I've received a deceptive mailer to my home just this last week that violated the state law and told me that certain working groups are against one of my council members. This is untrue. This, they-
I'm so sorry, Larry. I, we should have read this at the beginning of the meeting, and I wanted to address this that, so we have a state law, RCW forty-two-dot-seventeen-A-five-five-five, and we can't discuss elections and campaigning, let me finish, in a public facility, whether you are for or against a candidate, uh, that includes, uh, ballot measures. So I would just try and refrain from discussing, uh, the campaigns, elections, when we're in the chambers. That applies to all of us up here and members of the public, and I know that it's election time and, uh, it's on top of everyone's mind, but-
Point of order. Uh, Council President, I believe you're supposed to be the one delivering the message here.
Well, thank you. I did defer to Council, uh, Member Dylan as Council President pro temp. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm not discussing the election, I'm discussing the rule that has to do with elections that the city was supposed to be enforcing. And this is the rule, and I quoted the rule, and I'm explaining why the rule was broken. And I think that is important here, like it was important for our past mayor. This is untrue. They have, in fact, endorsed a council member. This council has, in the past, engaged in actions during the elections-
Larry.
-where you are now.
Thank you. We're really trying to stay on track here.
This is not right. This is wrong, and, and this is why this council is so unfair and unbalanced, because you let one side do one thing and the other side not. I have not endorsed one person or, or another. This is wrong.
Thank you, Larry.
Next up is Christine Quinn, and then Becky Pope, and finally, Greg Sharkey.
Christine Quinn, from Spokane. And about eighteen months ago, in Whittier Park, um, the mayor was there, Betsy was there, Paul was there, and you made a, Paul didn't make the promise. The promise was made by Betsy and Lisa multiple, multiple times, and it's on video. And you promised West Hills, you have enough, you have more than your share, and we are gonna be doing scattered shelters, there will not be more than thirty to a neighborhood. And we know what happened, so, thank you.
Becky? Becky Pope, she's still here? Uh, Greg Sharkey.
How y'all doing? My name is Greg Sharkey. I asked that y'all look at me. I wanna see all y'all. In two thousand nine, I was sentenced to twenty-five-hundred-and-forty-three months in prison, wrongfully. I sat for fifteen years in prison, and I reached out to the members of the state asking for help. Nobody wouldn't help me. I had to learn the law myself and fight to be standing here in front of y'all today, to say that even though I'm home now, the people that did the wrong things, Detective Marty Hill, Detective Tim Madsen, Lori Shealy, the victim-witness advocate, none of them are being held accountable. My whole life was taken. I lost my grandparents, my sister, my friends, all my family's been destroyed. When I come home and I go to tell somebody the story, the prosecution has the long arm to reach out to the news and tell them not to play it. Where's the accountability on behalf of the city of Spokane? Where's my justice? Where's my peace? I reached out to a number of y'all. Nobody replied. And I'm still out here working with the youth in the community to make sure what happened to me doesn't happen to them. Yeah, there's a lot of problems in Spokane, there's a lot of beauty here, too. I'm asking for y'all to see me as a human and to make something happen. These people told me in sixty-three years, when I figure out how to get out of prison, get out from under what they did to me, to come tell them how I feel. Now, I'm coming to the city and asking y'all to make that happen.
And thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
That's all.
That concludes our public testimony for this evening. Thank you all. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved to second to adjourn. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any no's, abstentions? Thank you, we are adjourned, we'll see you next week.